With a pledge of allegiance, Kirsten will lead us with that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Kirsten. The reminder to silence your cellphones and meeting documents are in the binder next to Commissioner Kelly. If you need a listening device, Robert will be able to help you with that. With that, we'll go into routine business.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any changes or corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of July 30th, 2013.
Approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any changes or corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $651,134.62.
Pay the bills with a comment. Second the bills.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today's bills include $54,000 for Excel Energy for facilities in this campus, another $12,000 for the jail electrical bills, and $10,000 to Sioux Falls Utilities also for electricity. So that's, you know, $75,000 right there. And then we had $400,000 in highway materials and expenses.
Thank you. Any other comments about the bills? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no reports today. The next item is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
Morning Kerry.
Approve the routine action.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for August 2013. Kerry Dever.
Good morning. I have the following people celebrating 10 years of service this month. Steve Funk, a tax and license technician in the treasurer's office. Jackie Rasmussen, senior deputy public defender in the public defenders office. Stacy Tezen, who is our homeless advisory board coordinator in human services. Krista Leith Holt, a sergeant in the sheriff's office. Rodney Axum, who's a lieutenant in the jail. And then we have the following celebrating five years of service. Marlin Schlenker, a tax licensed technician in the treasurer's office. Karen Willdryer and Martha Dargan, also tax and licensed technicians in the treasurer's office. Patricia Allen, who's a custodian in facilities. And Sophia Gatti, who's also a custodian in facilities. So our thanks go out to them for their years of service with us.
Thank you Kerry. Are any of those individuals here by chance? No?
I believe so.
Very good. I will move to the next item.
Item C is to recognize volunteers and county government for July 2013.
It was a banner month in July. I think we're pushing close to 300 volunteers for July, so numbers higher than I've seen before. So a particular thanks goes out to all those individuals in those areas.
Absolutely. Awesome number of people who make a significant difference for county government and the county we live in, and thank you for that service to us and everyone else. So, thank you Kerry.
There are no application for abatement today. There are no notices and requests, and there are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is petition for compromise of lien. John Pecas.
Thank you. This is on DPNO number 28354 in the amount of $2,217.29 and DPNO number 52116 in the amount of $521.50. The applicants currently are coming to Minnehaw County requesting a compromise of lien upon a release of $1,369.50, which is approximately 50 percent of the amount due and owing Minnehaw County. The couple currently have an opportunity to purchase a home on a contract for deed, and they would like to settle this account before the closing. Of course, the first DPNO, 28354, is for liens incurred between 1992 and 2004. It includes public defender, public advocate, and court-appointed attorney charges, a substantial number of partial payments, I've noticed that, totaling $2,118.13 were received and credited to the liens between 1998 and 2004. DPNO number 52116 is in the other applicant's name, and those charges were also for court-appointed attorney services, public advocate, and public defender services, and those charges were also incurred between 2004 and 2011. Only two charges were incurred between 2004, and both amounts were quickly paid off. The home they are attempting to purchase is located on 18th Street in Sioux Falls. The purchase price is $144,000. The applicant indicates that there is, the closing date has not been set because there are several liens and judgments that have to be resolved prior to the closing. According to their application, this is the couple's first opportunity to purchase a home after being renters for many years. Currently, one applicant is unemployed, and the other applicant receives approximately $46,000 in VA and social security disability benefits. Some of that is related to child support, which is taken out every month. The couple lists $15,000 in assets and $3,400 in liabilities. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it with a comment.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Heiburger.
Just looking back at what they've paid in the past, they did try to diligently pay off their liens, and they paid, if you put it all together, I think they paid more than 65 percent of what their outstanding liens were. And as Commissioner Pecas mentioned, this is also a veteran, the husband is a veteran who gets disability payments and is unable to work. And for that reason, I've supported this.
I also need to say, I believe that one of the applicants is in the commission room today, and if she wishes to address the commission, she can do so from her chair. She does, she won't be on camera, she doesn't have to come and identify herself, but if she wishes to address the commission, she can do so if she isn't required to, of course.
Absolutely. Is the applicant willing to make any comments?
I'd just like to say that this is going to be very hard for us to look at and try to get these passed through. And this is, I'm sure, we're still in the process of solving it. We've now got very long seconds, and this is all, we're going to be trying to pay them off soon. And we'll have to.
Well, thank you for coming, and thank you for your comments, and also thank you for trying to make a difference in paying these off. We do appreciate that. If we had everybody paying off 65 percent of their liabilities to the county, we would be in no financial concern, so, so thank you for your efforts. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Is there any comments from the commission? If not, let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Barth.
Aye.
Heiburger. Yes. Kelly.
No.
Pecas.
Yes.
Benega.
Yes. Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Go to the next item.
The next item is opportunity for public comment.
Anyone's here today that would like to make comments about anything that's not on the agenda, we'd be happy to hear from you now. Anyone have any comments? If not, we're going to go to regular business.
Regular business. Item number 10 is consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with Lincoln County for electronic monitoring and home detention services.
Good morning commissioners. In front of you, you have the memo explaining everything, and a contract for service to provide home detention services and electronic monitoring to Lincoln County. JDAI is expanding. Lincoln County signed a resolution to implement with us back in January, and we've been working toward this point for the last six months. I'll take any questions. It looks like home detention is going to be about, we're going to, 37.50 per day, per youth. And if you look at the last year and a half of their statistics, it'll be about, an average about two per day.
Any questions for Erin? Commissioner Barth.
So to this point, has Lincoln County actually had more in custody at the JDC? And are they also then trying to reduce that number?
Yep, they're beginning, I don't know that they've had more probably, but what they're doing is they're trying to implement the JDAI model. We have a couple of commissioners and the sheriff now on our policy steering committee for JDAI, and they're looking at reducing their reliance on security detention as well, and using alternatives more.
Any other questions for Erin? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agreement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 11 is consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign an easement granting Golden West telecommunications access to the south 20 feet of Janine Drive, lane adjacent to lot 6, block 4, Hartford Heights Edition, section 25, township 102 north, range 51 west of the 5th PM, Minnehaw County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning commissioners. Robert Wilson in the commission office. This item came to our office's attention after the notice of hearing for the vacation portion of Janine Drive was published a couple of weeks ago. Golden West telecommunications has some underground utilities buried in the, under the area that is going to be vacant. And they, they noticed that, obviously have a, a particular interest in being able to maintain access to work on their, their equipment down at that location. For that reason, they have asked for an easement that you have listed in your, your documents there, covering a portion that is legally, an area legally described in the easement and shown in a map on the last page of your drop box. This easement has been reviewed by both State's Attorney's Office and Julie Risti. There was a question early on if it made a difference whether or not you acted on this easement before or after you act on the proposal of the road vacation. My understanding is that that does not make a difference, that can be, can be done either way and, and be in full force and effect and no, no complications either way. Stand by for questions.
So any other questions, Commissioner Barth?
You know, this facility was probably placed in the public right-of-way or public easement prior to this. Doesn't that grandfather through? Do we have to actually act separately to create this?
I, I guess, I, I can't tell you if this easement is, is being strictly done out of an abundance of caution on their part, on their portion, or if this would be grandfathered in. I know this, this was obviously brought forth by Golden West when they saw that, that this road would, would be vacated, and I, I know there's, my understanding is there's no issue doing it this way. If there's a alternative way, that could, it could also be accomplished and maintain their access to it, I'm not aware of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is this in the city limits of Hartford?
It's in Hartford Heights.
So, so it's a right-of-way, all the way through there, or I, I mean, looking at the plat, it just, who owns it? The county? Or is it? The homeowner to the south, or if it's right, north, it must be north, this is upside down. Good for you. Morning Pat.
Good morning. Pat Herman, planning and zoning. The road was dedicated to the public when the plat was done in 1977. Nobody really gained ownership, and we all own it. If it's vacated, it'll split half and half, and you know, the property owner to the north will get half, the property owner to the south.
But, but Golden West wants an easement.
Golden West wants an easement, and they are looking at all their, where all their lines run in this area, and this one just happened to come to the forefront, but they will probably coming, be coming forward with more. I think they just want to get them on record where they have their easements, so in the, in the future, there's not a problem if they need access to those.
Thank you Pat. Any other questions for Robert or Pat? If not, we'll be looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the easement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 12 is consider a motion to approve two tandem axle trucks from I State Truck Center at a total cost of $225,622, and two dump bodies and hydraulics from Northern Truck Equipment at a total cost of $148,730. DJ Boothby.
Good morning commissioners. DJ Boothby, highway superintendent, requesting to purchase two additional tandem axle trucks off of the bids that we received earlier this year. Every year, as part of our long-range plan, we identify an equipment purchasing program or equipment purchasing list for the next several years. To date, in 2013, we've purchased everything off of our large equipment list, with the exception of two SUVs, three pickups, and a large stormwater pump. And so we have already purchased our tandem axle trucks. We purchase, or we plan on purchasing two additional trucks next year, and we have identified several pieces of equipment in our current fleet that overdue for replacement or well overdue for replacement. I think I told you during the budgeting process that we have $3 million or so worth of equipment that has passed due on its replacement schedule. The pieces of equipment that we would wish to replace with these two, with the purchases today are 1960's eras Oshkosh plow trucks that were originally military trucks. They are used very, very infrequently. If we were to receive record storm events and, and we have a whole bunch of snow on the ground, those can be used. But on a regular basis, they're not, they're not used at all. Our equipment people, they go and exercise the equipment probably monthly, I suppose, just to make sure that it's running properly in the event that it would be needed. However, as far as regular operation during the winter months, they are not used. And so, if you have any questions about the purchase, I can answer them now. Also, I wanted to just briefly summarize some of our financials that we've been discussing recently. We reported a few different numbers between the auditor's office and the highway office. And we met last week to kind of get together and make sure that we're on the same page as far as those go. To the end of June of this year, we projected all of our unexpended expenditures and unreceived revenue, and we project that at the end of the year, we will have a balance in our highway fund of 5.32 million dollars. And of course, that's higher than what we project, or what we anticipate when we do our budget with scheduling projects and things like that, but because of additional revenue and, and less than anticipated project costs, we have a higher than projected balance as of December 31st, 2013. So I think that that should be considered in your consideration for this purchase. If you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Commissioner Heiburger.
DJ, am I correct in saying that these were not vehicles that were on this year's budget? These would be in addition to this year's budget because you have extra funds?
That's correct. And essentially, what we are, are planning on doing is, is moving the 2014 purchase into 2013, and then in 2014, we would hope to move the 2015 planned purchase into 2014. So we're just purchasing two additional trucks in 2013.
Commissioner Kelly. This is more for Kirsten, but how do we get by without rebidding this? The bids were often close back in February or whatever it was. Now we're awarding to that successful builder in February. Does that cut out the other guys?
Well, the statute gives you a certain amount of time to take the same bid set, and we're well within that time for that. So that's what makes it legally permissible, so.
Other questions for DJ? If not, I have one. DJ, when you prioritize your equipment issues, obviously this was on that list, but as far as, how does that fit into your prioritization, if you will, of bridges versus equipment? And at the very end, you have to come up with the cash regardless of its equipment or bridge issues. And in previous conversations, we've been kind of behind on what you considered the need to get those bridges done. So couldn't that same dollar amount be used for bridge replacement or repair?
Again, as I discussed during the budget meetings, we have the budget and the dollars available for these projects that I'm wanting to do. We do not have the people available to administer those projects or construct those projects. And that was evident with my request for additional employees on the bridge crew that, that I had for the 2014 budget year. I don't think that this purchase of $374,000 will have an impact on, on the infrastructure, the bridge infrastructure specifically.
Well, I have to tell you, I don't agree. The issue will be is that if we have a bridge issue, that has a higher criteria for me than equipment needs that may or may not get used. I know we're behind a year, but it's not like these are disabled and unrepairable equipment trucks. So at this point, I have some concerns about where we're at with the whole bridge project list, because that's been a high priority, I think, of the commission to get those done. And a third of a million dollars is a third of a million dollars, so I'm kind of concerned about whether we use this for trucks or we use it for bridges. And whether we have the people or not, if we need the money for bridges, that is number one for me. Commissioner Heiburger.
I was just going to say, if we don't have the people to, and I, I totally recognize your point, if we don't have the people to build the bridges, then this is a whole conversation that we should maybe have too again, is because if you've got the money sitting there, but you can't even afford to build them, then the money just sits there.
Well, again, I, for part-time work of building a bridge, you can hire someone to supervise that project as a consultant. You don't have to hire full-time staff to do that. And if we have, we're not going to have to build every bridge in the county in one year. So if this becomes a need where we have to build a bridge, I think there's a person or two or 10 out there that knows how to supervise that construction project. So it doesn't have to be an employee. And I, I'm one of those individuals who likes to see consultants if, on a part-time basis rather than hiring full-time staff.
Commissioner, if I may.
Sure.
I, I also recognize your points. I don't think that there's anybody in this room that, that would put the status of our bridges, the status of our bridges as a higher priority than me. Given that, I am absolutely comfortable spending this expenditure on additional equipment. And, and we are working very hard at hiring a lot of consultants right now, working on bridges.
Right.
We already have three groups of consultants designing bridges for construction for next year, under the assumption that we can hire that person that has been budgeted in January for administering the construction projects. And so we're, this year constructing more bridges than I think have been constructed since Tom Willsy's tenure of, of 12 or 13 years with the department. And so we're making very significant progress. And I, again, I don't feel that this expenditure will in any way harm our efforts towards bridge reconstruction.
And I don't disagree with you at all, because I understand the, the work that you've done with those bridges, and you've moved that process along really well. It's certainly now formalized, organized, and, and is well-done, but you have a list of bridges that you're going to need to work on next year that could be moved into this year, or at least start that process with this $374,000. And I see that as a higher priority. It's just a philosophical issue between whether you do bridges or whether you do equipment. And if we have another Baltic bridge in the next few years, we'll be happy that we prioritize bridges, I think, rather than equipment.
That's understood. And just for noting your comment there, we will be bringing three agreements probably within the next two or three weeks for design of bridges that are not budgeted for this year, but are to be budgeted for next year.
You just verified what I was trying to accomplish. Any other questions or comments from DJ?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I guess I, this is from before you came on board here, but I can recall our legislative auditors commenting that we had, of all the counties in South Dakota, we had the most modern equipment. And that may be commentary on the other counties, but it's, we're not getting by a rusty pickup truck.
I agree with that. The one thing that you scare me about is having once been an auditor, I sure wouldn't want auditors running our operation. Everything is black and white in that line of work. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
What is the motion?
Yeah.
Motion to consider the approval of purchase of two tandem axle trucks in the State Truck Center at 225622, and two dump body hydraulics from where the truck equipment for 148730, based on the bids.
Thank you John. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for a lack of sec, of a second. Any other motions?
I'll move no action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for no action. Any conversation? Commissioner Barth.
That doesn't mean that at some future time, we might not want to do this, but right now, I think it's, we're not ready to.
Yeah, and again, I don't want to be negative, but I think frankly, with the other topic that you brought up about bringing us some bridge quotes in the next few weeks, months, or whatever, to get those bridges completed is part of what you've attempted and done a very good job of doing, and that's getting the bridges back into a reasonable shape for safety issues. And that safety issue is more important, I think, for me than equipment. And you're doing what is the right thing to do, and we appreciate that. We'll continue to support that, but I don't know that I'm ready to support it with equipment dollars. Commissioner Kelly?
I understood that these trucks are in the 2014 budget.
I believe that's correct, right? You're just trying to move it ahead of ways.
That's correct. And these trucks wouldn't even be in service until the winter of 2014, even with the purchase this year.
Okay. Right now, we have a motion and a second for no action. Any other comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Well, I'm sure we'll see you again in a couple of weeks, a couple of months, whatever. Thank you.
The next item is Minnehaw County Commissioner liaison reports.
Any liaison reports? Commissioner Heiburger.
I just have one, and it's short. Back in July, there was some electrical problems out at JDC, and they had to have their control board repaired, which was finally completed within about the last week or so, I think. And so a bill, a bill will be coming forward for about $3,500. Just wanted you to know.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth.
I wasn't going to mention this, but since we're fixing things, the clock on the north side of the clock tower is out, but we're expecting the only repairman in the country that can fix it to come to town and fix it in the near future.
That's not Bob Colby, is it?
No, it's not.
It isn't.
Okay.
Make one more comment.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a reminder that the Sioux Empire Fair is going on.
Thank you.
Jeff and I will be serving tomorrow at the Chamber luncheon.
Okay.
So bring your tickets and come and eat with us.
Thank you. Other liaison reports? If not, let's go to new business. Anyone have any new business?
I have a hold.
Anyone have any old business?
Mr. Chairman, we all got a copy of a letter from a woman in, well, her address is listed in Brandon, but lived in the area of Valley Springs, et cetera, talking about renaming this waterway out there, which, there's a proposal we discussed, I think, last week about naming it. And she feels that it has a name, and she also brings up an, an incident a century ago where two people drowned in there. And I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I sent Robert a text last night and said maybe we should check with museum archives and see if they've got some history on that that gives more details than what she sent us last night. It's very interesting.
Commissioner Pecas?
The person we need to contact is Bruce Blake, because he's the one that kind of champions the, what I would call the signage that we have around the community related to historical markers. And if in fact, this does actually indicate that Annie Anderson lost, you know, several people, in fact, well, she lost all her children. But if in fact, it's accurate, not only does it-
But if in fact, it's accurate, not only does it deserve to be named Lone Creek, but I think it also deserves to have Minnion County Historical Society put a marker there to indicate such. We have a variety of markers all over around this community identifying, you know, the historical place where somebody tripped. This is something that I think is, is more significant than that. So, I do think that it's appropriate, and I'm really glad that she sent us a letter and took the time to do it, because I appreciated the story.
Very thoughtful letter, and frankly, it gave me a different perspective in what we had originally for the Manning naming, if you will, and I, much to my surprise, there's a state board that actually goes through this process, federal board.
Takes years to do.
Yeah, it's very interesting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just, my only concern then would be that the process will move forward without, you know, inertia.
Robert and I did talk about this yesterday afternoon. He has forwarded this letter to that federal board for their response, and I think that would be appropriate so that we can get a response from them before we quote endorse it, and I think the amount of time that she's put into this with it appears pretty accurate facts. This needs to be addressed, and it needs to be researched, so. But Robert, has that process started already, so?
That's all I was going to comment on, is that we're going to be making that contract forward this afternoon, and then I have also responded to her already, thanking her for her comments.
Thank you, Robert. Any other old business? If not, we do need to go into exec session on a personnel item, and...
And litigation.
And litigation, is that correct, Kirsten?
Yes, correct.
So, I would like a motion to go into exec session.
That's my motion for litigation and personnel.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. Those in favor of going into exec session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Let's take about a five-minute break.